This time I would like to call the August 2021 meeting of your Hanover Borough Council Order and request that we all stand and jointly recite our Fledge of Allegiance. We will follow that by brief moments of silence.
My Fledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Mr. Secretary Felix, assistance, I will ask her to call the roll.
Mr. Taffey, Mr. Headford.
Here.
Mrs. Spunk.
Here.
Mr. Hoover.
Here.
Mr. Cress.
Here.
Mr. Lockers.
Here.
Ms. Pramis.
Here.
Mr. Ricard.
Here.
Mr. Rowland.
Here.
Dr. Ruff.
Here.
Solicitor Schultes.
Here.
Mayor Whitman.
Manager Dunford.
Here.
Secretary Felix.
Before we start into the preliminary matters of the agenda, I would like to announce that this evening the Hanover Borough Council participated in executive session, which started at 6:15 promptly, the reason being to consult with legal counsel regarding personnel matters as per Section 708a1, to consult with legal counsel regarding collective bargaining matters as pertained in Section 708a2, and to consult with legal counsel regarding information in connection with litigation, 708ac. All righty.
Concise.
At this time, yes, I'm going to ask for a public comment within the room first, and then we'll go on live and electronic. So you folks paid extra to be here tonight, you get to speak to us first, should you feel so inclined. Yes, ma'am?
Can I speak from here?
You can please come forward so we can hear you a little better and identify yourself and your address.
Here?
Yep, good.
Julie Mosbrook, a Dart Manor Court, and I wasn't here when the meeting was held regarding the Quilting Retreat decision, and I just have to say I was really very disappointed with it. I live in that neighborhood. It's going to be, it would be a million-dollar home sitting there, and both the, it would be landscape maintained, well-maintained. The owner would live right behind it, the manager would live adjacent to it, there would be somebody there all the time when it would be occupied, all the surrounding neighbors in the whole neighborhood, as well as I, have, we know Laura, we've spoken to her, and we all think this is a great idea, but the neighbors who live farther away are not, not with us. And they never spoke to her and never asked her any questions other than at the meeting. I was born and grew up in the borough, I worked at the hospital for 42 years as a nurse. My dad built a lot of houses in the area in the Clearview section, and to me, this almost feels like Laura's being rejected just because she's not a Hanoverian. I'd like to see a more progressive, kinder Hanover where people are accepted, sometimes for their difference and mostly for what they offer to our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Okay, we'll close it to the in-room participants, and I'll ask for our media's consultant's assistance with opening us up to online testimony or comment.
For those joining us via Zoom, you're able to unmute yourself if you wish to address the council, just click the little microphone icon with the slash through it to unmute yourself, and you're free to speak.
Looks like they're all still muted.
Yep.
Okay. All righty, at this time, we will close the all-public comment portion of the meeting and move into the agenda. Those of you following along, that moves us to item six, which is a presentation by Silas Chamberlain, York County Economic Alliance. Silas.
Hi.
Do I stand here?
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you, council, for giving me a little time. I do have a presentation that I think will be pulled up for you to see here, but I'll be talking about some work that the county's been doing for the last 18 months to expand the county's broadband network. I'll start by, if you can go to the first slide, showing you sort of the current state of broadband in York County. It might be a little hard to see here, but this is the current FCC mapping for broadband access in York County. The blue is presumably areas that have access, and if there were white on the map, those would be the areas without access. So in other words, the current FCC mapping shows that all of York County has broadband access. Any of you who have spent any time in York County, pretty much anywhere, know that there are large portions of our county that do not have broadband access. If you go to the next slide, you can see.
So you're saying the map is bogus?
Saying the map's wrong, yeah. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. You can see Hanover, it once again shows, you know, pretty much every part of Hanover Borough has fiber access, but as I'll show you in a moment, that doesn't mean that everybody is able to access fiber internet.
Has fiber access?
This is for fiber providers.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. So this, keep in mind, this is the FCC's mapping.
It's not me, is it?
That woke us up. I think we're in a different country.
I think we've been hacked.
Is it my ring, my phone ring?
Mr. Counselor, we're going to have to escort you into a secret chambers.
I'm okay.
That's a word you never want to see me doing in a presentation, no signal.
Exactly. Right.
Okay, I'm going to.
Explain this.
But the signal that we were getting was annoying, so.
That's true.
It might be a broadband problem.
If only we had better internet. Okay, so can you do the, you know, my thing you used to do in the projector with the birds flying and?
I could, I could do an interpretive version of this.
Oh, LED.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to help them out here, bridge the gap.
This was planned, wasn't it? This was absolutely, this is.
Exhibit A.
So you're back on one, you keep going, you have a paper presentation?
I do.
He's just not with you.
Oh, here we go, here we go.
Yeah, we're back.
Okay, so just keep that mapping in mind, and if you could go to the next slide, this is the census mapping for York County, which gives a better indication of where broadband access is and isn't. As you can see here, the darker colors are the areas with the least access, the lighter colors are the areas with more access. Parts of our county, especially the southeast portion, you can, you know, the Brogue, red line area, school district, southeastern school district, some of that darker shading means upwards of 75% of households don't have access to fiber broadband. You know that if you've traveled through that area, that there's very poor internet access.
Now, we just approved a fiber internet or fiber backbone group to do work in the borough. I'm sure you're going to talk about that.
Yep, that's connected into this. So even the lighter blue areas are, could be a third or more of residents don't have access, and that's pretty much the rest of the county. So all this is to show that despite what the FCC mapping shows about widespread broadband access, there are significant portions of our county that have very limited access. If you go to the next slide, this is especially true in our two largest urban areas, this is the city of York. So again, you can see there's census tracts within the city of York where 75% or more of residents don't have access. Overall, in the city of York, 40% of residents don't have access. The issues are a little different here than in the Brogue. In the Brogue, it's because there is no fiber infrastructure. In the city of York, there are fiber providers like Chantel, like Comcast, like Verizon, but because residents can't afford access, because they're moving between homes, because they might not have devices in the home, they can't access the fiber that's already there, and that's why you have such a disconnect. If you go to the next slide, it shows Hanover, and while Hanover on overall is in a better situation than the city of York, there's still roughly 25% of residents in Hanover Borough that don't have access to high-speed broadband.
So is that they don't have it, or they choose not to pay for it?
It's a combination of the two.
Well.
So there's a number of factors that go into it. One is that there isn't as much fiber infrastructure in some of these census tracts because they're lower income. Part of it is people can't afford it, part of it is there's more transancy between homes, so entering into a long-term contract doesn't make sense for a household, and then some of it is not having devices in the home. So if you go to the next slide, the county's approach under the CARES Act was to allocate some funding to try to get a handle on what the current situation is countywide, and so a consultant helped the county look at, you know, all of York County, looked at the existing service, where it's available, where it isn't, put together a plan that showed if you were to create a countywide fiber network, here's what it would look like, here's what it would cost, and then they actually allocated a million and a half dollars to do a pilot fiber project underneath the Heritage Rail Trail, going the whole way from the city of York to New Freedom at the Maryland border, and put two wireless antennas along it to show proof of concept. I'll show you in a moment how that 16-mile fiber, 16 miles of fiber that were built there under the CARES Act apply to what we're proposing now. If you go to the next slide, this is the middle mile network that was proposed within that plan done by Lit Communities, the county's consultant. It proposes creating seven rings of dark fiber backbone throughout York County. The whole point of this is almost to create, for lack of a better term, an interstate highway system for broadband, and then private providers come into those regions and provide all the fiber to the premise. So this is.
So they're, the private providers are going to pay to light the fiber?
Right. And they will actually pay the county for access to the fiber backbone. The way that this works is, you know, the upfront cost of building that fiber backbone is prohibitive for a private provider, especially in these more rural areas where there aren't as many customers and businesses, and so creating the backbone entices the private provider into the underserved area. Go to the next slide, this is just visualizing that pilot project for you, York to New Freedom. Again, this was sort of a proof of concept, but it is lit, it is active.
And that's the rail trail.
Chantel provides the service. That's, yep, pretty much the rail trail from York to Maryland.
And what do you get, are you going to go wireless side-to-side on the rail trail, or is it, you're going to go fiber to the house?
Fiber to the home, yep, yep. There will be some areas, you know, if you can picture, there's four small communities along the Heritage Rail Trail. Those make sense, they're sort of denser development, but the areas in between might be more of like a wireless, you know, signal cast across a rural area. So next slide, please. This is just some images from the pilot project, next slide. The county took the step of putting together a task force that would help advise the county on how to move forward, including, you know, business leaders, healthcare leaders, education leaders from across the county, and they've been advising the county now for the last year or so. Next slide. In late June, the task force was in front of the commissioners, presenting to them recommendations that had been developed by the task force over the last 68 months, in part because the county received $87 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds and allocated some of that funding to the implementation of the countywide broadband plan that was created. So they allocated $20 million for the creation of those first three rings of fiber, and I'll show you which ones were selected. They commissioned pretty much our consultant to work with our 911 network and look for opportunities to tie our 911 towers into the fiber backbone, which is something our 911 center's been asking for. They allocated $5 million for the design and implementation of potential wireless networks in city of York and Hanover Borough, and that's what I'll return to in a moment, and as you were just suggesting, issue an RFP to have a private provider come in and do the fiber to the premise off of the pilot project.
Fiber to the house.
Yeah, or business, or business. So that, they did act on that in late June, and so they've allocated that 25 million, and now we're in the process of moving those various pieces forward.
Ma'am, what's the name of that fiber company that we authorized to do?
Chantel.
Chantel, so you're engaged, obviously.
Yeah, we're coordinating closely with them.
Okay.
And to the point where the county side NDAs with them to look at their future plans so we're not duplicating efforts. Next slide, please. So these are the three priority rings that were selected, in part because these three rings bring in the parts of the county that currently have the lowest rates of broadband access. As you can see, it's roughly the southern part of York County, south of Route 30. The important thing to keep in mind is when you're looking at these rings, it's not what's within the ring, it's with, what's within the ring, but also, you know, buffered on the outside, because you can go both directions off these rings. As you can see, ring, the ring on the left, the furthest one west, gets right up to the outskirts of Hanover and would be an easy way to connect into existing fiber, but when you're going to the east, you really are going into areas that have no dark fiber right now at all. As I said before, after these are created, then the county could issue an RFP and say to Chantel, or Comcast, or Double Dog, or anybody.
We didn't have dark, we have lighted fiber right here in this alley and all through the downtown.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, so we're not, we don't think that, well, I'll get to that in a second, but we don't think this project is addressing fiber in our urban areas that already have it. Chantel can do that without, without us. And the same is true in the city of York. So those are the three rings, that's roughly 18 to 19 million dollars, that's the priority in terms of constructing that network. The design and engineering of that will take roughly, you know, the design is easy, four to five months, it's the permitting, obviously, when you're going across that distance, it's 144 miles of fiber, a combination of aerial and underground, but, you know, in the next two years or so, the goal would be to have that constructed and lit and to be able to have private providers build off of it. Next slide, please.
So we would then lease that to private providers on a, however, recurring basis?
There's two ways you can do it, you can either do a lease for access, or you can do a per-premise fee. So some, some counties that do this, have done this elsewhere in the country, there aren't many in Pennsylvania, but they've charged like $5 a household per month, and because you're providing a lit service to them, it's worth it, you know, for them.
Oh, yeah, because the backbone's all the money.
Right. So there is a, it's not a huge revenue component for the county, but it is a county, it would be a county-owned asset that then produces some revenue and could go back into building more fiber.
Is it safe to assume the private companies then will just pass that along in fees to their customers?
I, I think they build it right into their pro forma, yep, yep. And we're talking $5 on a $50, you know, $60 monthly internet bill. And I'll show you in a moment, right now, we're, we're looking a lot at pricing, what people currently pay and what they'd be willing to pay, so that we can, you know, when we're selecting providers, the nice thing about controlling the asset is you can dictate price points and speeds up to a certain point. If you say it has to be too low in cost, then a provider won't come, but you can also avoid some, you know, price gouging through, you know, somebody coming in and establishing a monopoly. So it gives a little more control than just saying a private provider comes in and can charge whatever they want, provide, you know, service to as many households as they want. And the other key piece is the speeds, and I'll show you some, some data that we collected on, on speeds. But the, the $5 million component of this is urban wireless, and this starts to get to trying to address that 25% who is probably never going to be able to afford even like the Comcast Essentials type programs that try to lower the price, and the idea, which is, you know, used in some cities across the country, of just providing a base level Wi-Fi to all residents, all businesses, and all visitors, so that anybody coming into the community would be able to go on their phone or their laptop, pull up the public Wi-Fi network, and at least have basic Wi-Fi to be able to, you know, go on your well-span portal, or UPMC portal, or whatever, and, you know, do your telehealth appointment with your doctor, students would be able to go on their blackboard and download their homework assignment, you'd be able to do the basic computing, but if you're a household that has 10 devices that's streaming HD video or video games, you're paying Chantel or you're paying Verizon for the better service and speed, but at least you're providing a baseline. And then also, if you have tourists coming into your downtown, they're able to pull up, you know, Wi-Fi, municipal Wi-Fi. So the plan here would be for the county to build these networks, as I said, 5 million's already been allocated. As you can see, we're looking at a proposal right now to design both networks of roughly $350,000. The county, you know, would like to move forward with doing that design. That takes about four to six months for both communities, and then about 12 to 18 months for construction. The key piece of construction is identifying locations for antennas, and then doing pole attachments and things like that with utilities. But Business Information Group is a York-based, York County-based business, and they're the ones that gave us that proposal for the design and engineering work.
Is it the 5G format?
Some of it would be 5G, and then some of it is above my head, it's a different, it's a different format. Yeah, I don't, I'm not the expert on that one. But, um, but again, the basic here would be anywhere in the municipal limits, there would be at least baseline Wi-Fi. Chantel and, and other providers are pretty much okay with that, because this is not providing internet service to their customers, it's providing the service to people who can't afford to be their customer. They will still have lots of people signing up for the true high-speed, high-fiber, gigabyte upload, gigabyte download.
This is real basic backbone.
It's essentials.
Text stuff, not, you could say it would be backbone text, not.
Geek.
Streaming, yeah.
Multimedia, thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be the level where you could do like Zoom streaming and things like that, but you're not gonna, you're not going to do like high video editing and stuff like that and then upload, uh.
I don't know, I kind of get stuck on the, where, where does the role of government end?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's why, you know, if, I think if our providers were coming to us and saying, this is duplicative of what we're doing, we'd be more concerned about that boundary. But even out in the rural areas, you know, the internet service providers are actually excited because it, they want to be the ones to lease the service, and, and when you look at Chantel's mapping, when you look at Comcast's mapping, they're not planning to go into those rural areas.
So they would only do, in theory, you're saying you're going to do the pole down the street, and the, the ISP, if you will, would do pole to the house.
Every, yeah, every.
Off of your, or the county's backbone.
Yes, right. And honestly, that's where, that's where most of the money is, you know, maybe a 10% of it is the leasing of the dark fiber, the rest is the connection to the household and the monthly service.
Absolutely.
But speaking to the balance between private and public, the county doesn't want to be an internet service provider, and so very early on, we decided we're not, definitely not going that route. So next slide, please. In the midst of this, we are doing a demand aggregation survey, this is trying to get to some of that information about what people have as current speeds, what they're currently paying, how much they, how much speed they would want, what they would be willing to pay for it. Part of this is to allow us to go back and supplement those FCC maps that we saw at the beginning that we think are inaccurate and don't tell the full story, and be able to say, within the census tract where you say there's full broadband coverage, we have, you know, 500 survey respondents that took speed tests through our survey that show they don't have access. The other thing.
Or they may, it may be available, but they don't subscribe to it.
That's true, too, right, and we ask that.
Or it's still on COAX, or Twisted Pair.
Right, or they're, yep, or DSL or something like that. The other piece of it is that as we go out to issue RFPs for private providers to come in, we can say in those RFPs, here's the current market situation, here's how many people respond to the survey, here's what they're willing to pay, and of course, then they'll have to take it from there and figure out what the real market and pricing is, but at least we can have a baseline understanding of the demand. If you go to the next slide, I can show you some early results. We've had just over 1,000, around 1,100 surveys completed to date, we launched this about five or six weeks ago. So far, 88% have expressed dissatisfaction with their current internet. That's not that shocking, because I think if I took the survey, I wouldn't say I love my internet, I don't know that anybody loves their internet provider, but 100, we've had 178 respondents from Hanover or the Penn Township area, up to 50% of those taking it, of those 178 respondents, when they took the speed test, it showed that they're getting lower speeds than what they indicated is the package that they pay for. That can, there's a lot of reasons why that could be, it could be that they're using a different device than their, their main device, so.
Yeah, that's very subjective.
So it's very subjective, but I think it's still pretty telling, and, and then the two top comments, because there are some open-ended questions, are focused on current prices being too high, it speaks to the affordability, and in some areas, you really can't get high-speed internet, so, you know, a lot of the speed tests that we're getting back are like 10 megabyte upload speeds and download speeds, which is almost not enough to do basic computing. So some people technically have access, but the speeds are, are very slow, and they're paying a lot because they're in an inaccessible area. And then, of course, the major complaint is either there's no choice, they only have one provider, or there's just no access at all, and they would pay anything to get, to get it, because a lot of people right now are getting quotes from providers that say, we'll run five or half a mile down the road to get to your house, but you'll pay the $30,000 in fees to do it.
Or you can use a satellite dish, which sucks.
Right, yes. Yeah, for lack of a better word. So on the back end of. So on the back end of this survey, every green dot on that map, and I should have pulled the Hanover side of this, this is the southeastern side of it, every dot is a respondent to that survey. When you click on that, you can see the speed of their internet, if they have internet, what they currently pay, what they'd be willing to pay, whatever open-ended stuff they've provided. And so we're really working on trying to push this out as much as we can. Some of the school districts have sent it out to their households. That's been really useful. If you go to the next slide, I think it talks about next steps.
Now, you're familiar with the LIU has done in terms of the fiber for the districts.
Yeah, yeah, and they're gonna, we've agreed to share results between the two as well.
Okay, good.
And Dr. Van Dusen, who's over in southeastern school district, has been coordinating with all the other superintendents, too.
All right.
So we're still working on getting that out, and if any members of council would like to share it, or if the borough would like to share, we can certainly make that plug and play and very easy for you. Our next steps on the wireless network are to work with the city of York and Hanover Borough. We've already had a couple conversations about this process, and really, we're not looking, we're not looking for much, and we're definitely not looking for financial support. We're not looking for a whole bunch of time, but we're looking for an eagerness to work with this consultant to talk through what the design and engineering would look like. And then on the middle mile side of this, which is that, you know, three hundred thirty-three mile network and the first hundred forty-four miles that we want to build, that's, you know, the county working with a design, a different designer than the wireless network to design those and start construction over the last, over the next couple of years. I think in aggregate, the middle mile benefits pretty much every York County resident, but more directly for this, for Borough, it's really the wireless network that we think is the, the benefit.
The wireless network?
Well, the, to provide the baseline wireless access for residents.
Okay. Our daughter lived in Hollywood, Florida, and they had a community Wi-Fi network where everybody got internet service at, at some level for nothing.
Yeah, it's one of those things where in the age of like people working remotely or outside the office, it's very enticing to know that anywhere in the community, you can just pull out your laptop, pull out your cellphone.
Somewhere you have to compare that with, I'd like free electricity, too.
Yeah.
So I don't know where the line is there.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I mean, I think that the goal, the county at least, is that twenty-five percent who can't access it but would like to versus the people that want it as a luxury. But it's hard to know exactly what those numbers are.
Fair enough.
And I think that is the end of the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you have about the county's work or what the next steps are.
But what do you need, not, you don't need money, right?
Nope, don't need money.
A willingness to work with the consultant.
We'll approve to, to fund that, nothing, right?
So, an easy ask, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
At this time, council will be moving into the interview process for four-year terms on our planning commission. We're going to allot up to five minutes for each of four candidates. So I will start with Mr. Philip Baum, if he's here. Mr. Baum, introduce yourself.
I'm Philip Baum, 201 York Street.
Tell us why you would like to be on our planning commission, please.
Well, I became a resident here about five years ago, and I came from New Jersey and worked in Manhattan, and it's a big difference, and I love it here. If, if you know my house, I'm on the corner of York and Middle. It's now a blue brick house. We've done tons of work, gotten lots of compliments.
Yeah, I know that house, yeah.
We just, this is our home, and I want to be a part of Hanover, basically. I am a, by trade, I'm a senior property manager for a company down in Anarundale County. I've been before planning commissions for various things here, I'm sorry, in, in Anarundale County, in New Jersey, in Manhattan, so I'm aware of the inner workings and how difficult it can be sometimes, dealing with the motion versus, you know, the, the needs of the town. And like I said, the main reason, I just want to be involved.
Any specific questions for Mr. Baum?
You would be available on the time, didn't I, as the planning commission meets, and they meet first, is it first Wednesday?
First Wednesday.
Yes, first Wednesday.
Yes.
I think they make you by dinner.
What is your experience with zoning type of issues?
The, the only experience I have, we're currently actually down in Anarundale County, trying to get a bank approved at a location, and the, the county is making the bank jump through hoops that they haven't made anybody else jump through. So I, the only, is just providing all the information again and again in different formats to explain to the zoning commission what we're trying to do.
I appreciate your interest as a, quote, newcomer to the Hanover community. It's nice we have people that want to get involved. Thank you. Appreciate it.
One final chance for questions. Anything to my left?
Anything?
He's dealing with Anarundale County, will be easy.
Yeah.
That's a good concept.
To my right? Thank you, Mr. Baum.
Thank you very much.
Our next candidate, if they're here, is Jennifer Noon, and I believe she pre-communicated that she is or isn't here. She's not here?
She's, she's not, right? She did an email and said she would be unable to attend due to scheduling conflict.
Gotcha, okay. Moving along. Scott Rowland, is he here?
No. Couldn't make it.
Mr. Rowland, would you like to speak on your own behalf or defense?
Yeah, I guess. I've been on the planning commission now as, well, I guess vice chairman now for six or seven years. I was appointed to the planning commission ten or eleven years ago by the prior borough manager, Mr. Rebert. I'm a property owner, both commercial and residential, here in, in Hanover Borough. I've, was in the electrical connector, electronic connector, well, electrical connector business, manufacturing business, too. I spent eight years on the school board for Hanover Borough, and I think we made a tremendous difference there in the, the resurrection of our school district, even was instrumental in hiring Mr. Kress.
I have to blame him now.
Mechanical engineer, I don't know, pseudo-retired, some may debate that. Did I miss anything?
No.
I, you know, just kind of...
Questions?
We've been here for twenty-six years, I guess Karen and I have, so...
I'll start the questions by, obviously, you're very involved as, with council as well as given your seat. Do you don't foresee any conflicts that would be limiting you to perform your capacity in either...
No, and you, you make an interesting point, Bill, I think, by having in the planning commission is, I believe, Timmy may be able to, to help me here, is the only public committee that's allowed to have council members on it, or one of the few?
Up to two.
Up to two.
Seven members.
And Mr. Heckberg and I are, are those members. And I think, obviously, there may be some conflicted moments with it, but I think it's, it's very important that Chuck and I bring a lot of insight from the planning commission to the council and back, which in other interactions, and I'll, I'll pick on the zoning in particular, is, is lost because that linkage isn't there with, with the two. So, yeah, I think there conceivably could be some confliction, as you say, but I think that...
There's also some good.
Yeah, the communication upside of it would override that.
Okay. I'll start on the right this time. Counselors, to my right, questions of councillor candidate Rowland?
Just clarifying that Scott and Chuck can be on the planning committee is allowed.
Up to two.
Two councillors, two councillors can be, yes.
Okay, I need to have that. Okay, clarification. Thank you.
Right? You're in the real estate business. I appreciate your insight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any sort of, I don't see a real conflict there.
You know, I mean, if we, I would have any projects that would come in, I don't think I've had any in the, in the mean. You obviously recuse yourself from it, but I, I don't know, I don't think that's, hasn't been an issue.
Because, I mean, I could see myself on, not that I wouldn't be on there, but I could see myself on there.
Sure, we'd love to have you.
As an agent and not have any feeling that there'd be a conflict.
Right.
Unless something came up that I wanted to develop or purchase, then I'd be, that would just be...
All right, then you know, then you know when the step was, yeah, when you're conflicted.
Yeah, I think we've, I mean, we've all...
We're pretty good at doing that.
Been around each other for enough years to know and to say.
Right, right. Other councillors to my left? Nope. Vice President Rupp, any remarks or questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowland. I'm sorry, did you want to?
Nope.
You're in my middle lane, I'm left and right. And our last applicant would be Mr. Funk. Mr. Funk?
How can you pick me before Tony?
Yes, you all know her on her other half.
Yes.
The better half than the other half.
You told us you were in charge earlier tonight, Tony.
She's always in charge. I was on planning commission back in two thousand four, two thousand five. Back then, if you wanted to run for council, which I did, and went on council, I had to resign from planning. Since that, a couple of years ago, I retired, now I get back into doing something. So I was an electrical contractor for forty-two years and seen a lot of construction. I was like electrician all my life, and I think I'd be pretty good on planning commission.
Having been around this for a while, you have a pretty good sense of what the commitment is and how the governance of the towns, or of the borough, excuse me. Okay. Counselors to my left, questions of the applicant? Or candidate, sorry. No? Dr. Rupp? Mr. Heckberg? Counselors to my right? You can ask anything you want, for the record. You can ask anything you want.
Come on, Ali, ask a good question.
He's on the roof, like, do you remember when that missing last cookie from the cookie jar disappeared in nineteen seventy-eight?
No, I do not.
Okay. You're safe.
Sorry.
All right, well, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Tony.
Looks like we're closing the book on that, and we will transition on your printed agenda to agenda item eight, that being the consent.
Can I ask a question? What about the person who's in charge, just to mention, is that it?
Well, we've all received her resume, and her name will be here for consideration, so...
All right, thanks.
Can't interview her if she's not...
How do we, how do we handle the, the vote moving forward, or what's the action?
We're gonna get there under, under committee reports after the consent agenda. So, back into the, what I was saying, the chair requests a motion to cross us the consent agenda before you... So moved by councillor Lockard, is there a second?
Second.
We moved in second, discussion or items which are...
Sorry, damn.
Okay. I will call a question on favor of approval of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we will move into reports of standing committees, and the first being that of council workshop and finance, Dr. Rupp, and I think you have an agenda item there.
Thank you for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I'm not quite sure how we're gonna do this. I guess we were, a consideration motion to appoint two following two citizens to the planning commission for a four-year term.
I would, I think our solicitor's gonna offer, the nominations should come from...
Right, so here's the, here's the process.
Yeah, thank you.
First is that persons are to be nominated. You do not need a second, so anyone can nominate any person, and then we vote in order of the nominations.
So if, let's say you have, okay, you have four people, so somebody, let's say Scott gets nominated first, okay, so if he gets more than so many votes, then that's redundant, the person that's get voted?
We have to select two.
There's, there's two selections, so, so if the first two garner enough votes, then there's no further voting.
Oh, I see. I love it. It's like, first! That's how we do that.
Oh, so it's descending number of votes? No, no. We get, we get the slate of nominees, and then we vote on them individually. Yays or nays? Yes. Okay, got it. That makes sense. If there's a majority for the first one, that person's selected. If there's a majority for the second one, that person's selected, and then there's no further...
And when you run out of seats, you're done.
Right. Got it.
All right. I'd like to nominate Tony Funk.
Second. We don't need a second. I wasn't paying attention.
We're gonna dock you for that.
That's all right.
Anyone else? Will we wait for someone else to be nominated? Or will we...
Yes, we need a, we need at least one other nomination.
Do we vote first or nominate the second nominee?
Yeah, we do first.
We select another?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion for anyone else?
I'd like to nominate Scott Rowland. You know, if we can have two councilmen on planning committee, which I did not understand before, then I will, since he is already an existing member.
Any other motions?
I nominate Philip.
Any other motions? Tony, Scott, and Philip. So do we vote? Do we just sort of take a voice vote, the first one? Okay, all right, okay. All those in favor of Tony Funk being added to the, the planning commission for, for your term, indicate by saying aye.
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 Should probably be a roll call to tell them to get it actually.
You want a roll call?
Oh, we do roll call.
Makes sense.
That way we can count them as we go.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're voting on the nomination for Mr. Funk.
Yes.
Mrs. Funk.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Heckberg?
No.
Not a refusal.
I was gonna say.
That's ludicrous. Mr. Hoover?
No.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Ms. Pranzis?
No.
Mr. Ricart?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
No.
We have five yeses and four noes, so the nomination passes.
All right, congratulations. Okay. Now, would you do a roll call, please, for Mr. Rowland?
He's second, yeah, candidate, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Heckberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Ms. Pranzis?
No.
Mr. Ricart?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
I guess yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Okay, so then we have eight in favor and one against, so Scott will give the second.
I thank you, Mr. Baum, for coming here this evening, and hopefully, hopefully we can get you involved at some other level, at some committee or something. We would love to have you get involved. What happens, we have to vote for him?
Uh, yeah.
I thought, okay, sorry.
One comment.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Our, our ordinance that sets forth the guidelines for our Planning Commission does not provide for alternate members. The municipal planning code does, however, provide for alternate members. If the board, the planning commission would like, or the council would like, to appoint alternate members to sit, we could certainly amend our ordinance to...
It's coming to play here. It's going to, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Will I have a motion to be an alternate member?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. Do I need a second on that?
We don't have the provision, we don't have the provision yet to do...
Oh, you don't?
We'd have to, we'd have to amend our ordinance to provide for alternate members.
All right. All right, we will look in...
And we have other seats expiring soon.
Wait, what?
Yes.
Is none too?
They're probably all expired.
Make a motion.
That's another question.
Right, right, that, it was three.
So, this time, three. I don't recall.
We're not bringing that up tonight, though.
So, what is that process from that ordinance?
It would, I don't know if you want to bring that to the Planning Commission first to get their viewpoint, and then to any other committee instead of the...
And feels is appropriate to bring it to.
And then Borough Council would authorize it to be drafted.
I want a general consensus of maybe taking that to the Planning Commission to have them take a look at that.
Yeah.
Not a bad idea, because it's sort of like new members in training of sorts.
Yeah.
We've, we've got changes coming next year.
Yeah, I think we do, yeah. So, we will take that ordinance into consideration, and if that takes, if we manage to do all that in your sole interest, we'll get back in touch with you. How's that? Thank you again very much.
Thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rupp.
Okay, moving on. Consideration motion to approve this list, it's added to the hills regarding their request to remove material from the former landfill man on township. We have that letter in front of you. Go ahead. Thank you.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration motion to approve this list, it's added to the mail department, natural resources, stating the borough is not interested in selling its land at this time. That letter, all those in front of you.
So moved, so moved.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration motion to approve funding of the 2021 fire commission budget deficit estimated at $35,973, contingent upon parallel action by Penn Township.
Second, second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Can I make a comment there?
Let me get through my vote first. Any opposed? Motion passes. Your comments, sir?
Can we get Chief Flauscher to have to put together a cupcake sale to put some in?
Good luck.
Consideration motion to approve the library work group charge and appointing council members, Ricard, Kress, and Hagberg till January 30, June 30, 2022.
So moved.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Consideration motion approving the interim contract with P. of municipal...
Sorry, the votes cast were moving.
No, I just thought Janie might want to expand on her point.
No, we're moving on.
She has no responsibility to do that. Consideration of a motion approving the interim contract with P. of municipal codes aligned for professional services to enforce borough codes for the period August 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, and hourly cost up to $50 per hour for at least 20 hours per week for 22 weeks, and an approximate annual cost of $22,000.
So motion.
Yes, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
And consideration motion...
I'm assuming that's the alternative as for replacement employee pay, right?
Right, for now.
Back to you.
Consideration of a motion to approve resolution number 1328 for lease of a dump truck regarding a budget and previously approved three-year lease with BCI capital to be paid from the regional wastewater treatment fund at 1.35% annual interest and a total three year expenditure of $166,385.
So motion.
Been moved in second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is it a capital lease where we...
Yes.
We take title to it at the end?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for this my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rupp. We'll move into public works and facilities. Counselor Hagberg?
Mr. President, consideration of a motion to authorize the contract to purchase a trash compactor estimated at $200,000 for the transfer station to avoid potential transfer station shutdowns and revenue losses.
So motion. Well, second.
Second.
All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Comment?
We don't, we're not taking comments, we're just doing business.
I would, I would like to see us put together a business plan to expand the volume of business that we have with the trash compactor, because we have a fixed cost of something, and any incremental business that we could take in with other trash collecting people, such as we used to have, would be great to defer our fixed cost there.
That's in the refuse study.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Hagberg.
Consideration of motion to approve resolution number 1329 to authorize grant applications through the strategic management planning program.
Second that motion.
All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just one comment that, on the record on it, I did respond to the email. Oh, they came out with the details to Nan and Sam, so if those, if those comments could be included or expanded in the study, that would be good. Like to make a motion at this point, too, with regard to that program, the Borough Council Resolutional Stamp Grants, to direct the borough manager to prepare a letter for the Borough Council President to send to Penn Township Board of Commissioners, asking Penn Township to participate in a joint study of the costs and benefits to both municipalities of the fire commission as currently organized, the fire commission as envisioned as fully merged and staffed joint entity, the fire commission under alternative models of service delivery such as joint provision of emergency medical services only, and to request that the fire commission be directed to suspend joint labor negotiations until both municipalities vote to so authorize after receipt of inaction on the recommendations of the study.
Okay, so...
Second.
Yeah, I'll give it to you to read.
There's another verbose, Chuck.
I did not write it.
I'm just kidding.
Motion in a second. All in favor of the question, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move you, keep you up the bat, but you're going into the planning items, for the record.
Consideration of a motion to approve an extension of the contract to Bucart Horn in the amount of $59,200 funded under the American Rescue Act, Plan Act, for preliminary design and engineering for the library roof replacement project.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of motion to authorize the 2021 capital project estimate at $10,350 for replacement of the garage doors at the sand filter building at the regional wastewater treatment facility.
So motion.
All moved on, or all moving to a, a set of resolutions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Those are electric remote doors, right?
Motion carries.
Consideration of a motion to authorize the 2021 capital project estimated at $30,000 for the replacement of the shed roof at the Lawrence Baker Shepherd Dam.
So motion.
All in favor of that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Hagberg. We will segue into public safety. The distinguished, Counselor Rowland.
Okay. Consideration of a motion to approve the traffic studies required by PennDOT to implement brake retarder restrictions in the borough of Hannover.
Second.
Been moved in second, and any...
Second.
Any comments?
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
Okay, second point is consideration of a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance for no parking zone at 212 and 223rd Street, as requested by St. Vincent DePaul Church, same to be forwarded to PennDOT as a first step in their approval process with public parking to remain in front of the school.
So motion.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this one? We had a lot of questions, but they're mostly resolved at this point.
And that, that point was recommended by PennDOT, so we shouldn't have any issues with their approvals.
Right.
All in favor of the considerations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. That's all you have, Mr. Distinguished Rowland?
I believe that's all I can distinguish.
Thank you. Nice. We're going to go to Water and Sewer, and we're going to ask the distinguished Counselor Kress to give that request.
Consideration of a motion to approve the bid award for the 2021 water main replacement project to EK Services New Cumberland, PA, in the amount of $1,665,940.25, contingent upon formal review by staff and solicitor.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second, awarding the replacement project. Is there any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's all you have, Counselor Kress? Thank you.
It's enough money for nine, ten minutes.
Sure. I see no mayor, so I'm assuming there is no mayor's report this evening.
I spoke with her, and she wasn't going to be able to make it. She had conflict.
Conflict, okay. So, we have under other matters, new business, old business, and communications. Is there, Solicitor Schultz? Glaring omission?
Well, just a matter of Sunshine Act protocol with regard to the additional motion that Mr. Hagberg made under resolution 1329 with the additions. That's not on the agenda, so we did not provide the public an opportunity to comment on that, because it wasn't on the agenda. So, we should probably ask whether there is any public comment with respect to the additions. And then, if there's no public comment, then that's fine. If there is, maybe we revote.
Let me, let me do all of that at the end. That's, when I'm, when I'm opening up for public comment. Okay, noted. All right, so we will move into communications. Do we have any communications other than what's listed? I will read it, which, we have the Hannover Chili Cookoff, Sunday, September 5th, 11:05 at Goodfield. Upcoming council committee meetings are listed in the agenda. No other communications? I will ask for public comment within the room at this time, specifically noting that council wants to know if there was some input on the addition that we added to the agenda item at the...
Nan, should there be a Planning Commission meeting on this council and committee meetings?
Let me, let me touch up with that later. Let me go to the public comment portion. So, anyone in the room want to speak generally, or to the point of the addition to the agenda? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Mandy Smith, York Street, Hannover. I used to attend public safety, which I enjoyed, but is there a place where I can read how you go about doing things? Like, you talk about, the solicitor had mentioned about the agenda. Like, I have no idea what you're presenting. I was sort of surprised that you passed the voting on the Planning Committee, and you had a three-minute interview here. I'm sure you have papers to read on the people, but I would have thought that would have went to the next meeting. I'm just asking, is there a place where I can read about the processes?
There is a place. The borough website is the place, and we also have an ability for you to sign in and receive notifications about things that you're interested in. And if you need some help to do that, a borough secretary has helped people through the process to, so that they get email notifications of upcoming meetings, of agendas, minutes, whatever you need.
Because, I mean, to me, you know, and it's hard to get community involved, and I hear a lot of negative things, because people don't understand your process, or whatever, whether it's bureaucratic or not, or whatever. So, you know, and then they, they'll say, well, I didn't like that. And I said, well, you sort of have to know where to look. And I said, I'm not even sure sometimes. I mean, the website's better from the previous.
You can actually get notifications.
Okay.
And a lot of people call.
Agenda notifications are great, that you literally get emailed the agenda for the meetings.
Because what I knew you were going to, I don't, I can't be on the planning because of some things, but, I mean, it would be something I would have been interested in as well, however, and that's fine. I just didn't realize the process would be that you're looking at it, entertaining it, and it's nominated. I just thought that was pretty fast, but that's just my opinion.
We, we've been soliciting resumes and applications for six weeks?
Yeah, for several weeks.
Yeah, so it's just, this was just the culmination, sorry, you saw that.
No worries, I just state my opinion.
And we, we know we can't visit people or send everybody something, but what we do is you can get things sent to you, which is, it's great, we have that technology now. We can do that.
Well, the website is better. I mean, it's much better. I was on it a couple times, so.
Nan, where do we post stuff? What's our, do we use the Evening Sun?
That's where we do our legal ads. But that's, most people don't read the legal ads, but we, that's what we, you know, that's what we have to do.
Okay, I've got to take reins back in here again. We are in, officially in public comment. Anyone else within the room, either a general comment, or specifically to the motion that was added about the, don't even remember. About the STMP. Yep. Okay, I'll close it for the room and ask for help from community media to open us up for online comment on either, again, generally speaking, on a general comment, or anything specifically on the STMP agenda addition.
For those joining us via Zoom, you're now even unmuted yourself if you wish to address the council. If you're calling in, the number on your phone is star six, unmute yourself.
Do I see one is unmuted? Justine? Anyone online or electronically connected to us, like to speak?
I would. This is Laura, and I was wondering, Bill or Tim, if you could summarize briefly what the change is that you're recommending.
Okay. The, I think it's to your question, Solicitor, on the agenda item addition, is that correct, Laura?
That is correct. Can you summarize it briefly, what is it that you're recommending?
We, I, we could, I guess, do better than that. We can reread it, if that's okay.
Do I need to reread that?
Yeah. That's the best way to do it.
Okay, so the, the change that was read in was related to the, the joint fire departments, that we are directing the borough manager to prepare a letter for the borough council president to send to Penn Township Board of Commissioners, asking Penn Township to participate in a joint study of the costs and benefits to both municipalities of the commission, the fire commission as currently organized, the fire commission as envisioned as fully merged and staffed joint entity, and the fire commission under alternative models of service delivery, such as joint provision of emergency medical services only, and to request that the fire commission be directed to suspend joint labor negotiations until both municipalities vote to so authorize after receipt and action on the recommendations of the study.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else online or electronically connected with a question, either general in nature or to the specific agenda item?
Mine is a comment.
Thank you, go ahead.
Not, not related to the, that agenda item. This is Justine Choxas with Main Street, Hannover, 146 Corlough Street.
Go ahead.
Just speaking to Silas's presentation, I look forward to hopefully the council's true consideration of working with the YCEA on the public Wi-Fi opportunity. It would be a huge benefit toward downtown and to visitorship, tourism, and the business owners that currently operate. So, I really think that that's, I hope that that is something that the borough will deeply consider and participate in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online or electronically connected? Seeing no hands up, I will conclude the public comment portion of the meeting, and that leaves us with a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.